I've got six o'clock if everybody would.
And we're going to do the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. We have a moment of personal privilege. This morning at 5:40 a.m., we lost one of our colleagues. Former council member Mark Schreiber passed away. He's had a rough go the last, I guess, few months, probably the last year or so. I saw him Saturday over at the nursing home. He was in good spirits, his mind was good, but obviously cancer was taking its toll on his body. He was excited. He was trying to get out of the nursing home before Thanksgiving, but life had other plans. So if you could just do a moment of silence. Mark was an amazing eight-year member of this council, but even more importantly, the work he did at MSP and for the state of Missouri. He was an amazing individual, someone that was a friend to all and just an amazing person. And if you just take a moment of silence, then we'll ask councilmen and elders to give our prayers, and then we'll do our pledge of allegiance. Councilman, if you would.
Dear Father in heaven, thank you for the blessings to each of us, our city, our county, and the state of Missouri we live in. We come before you tonight to ask for your guidance and professionalism as we discuss issues that come before us as we try to make Jeff City great. We ask you to watch over us and give us wisdom to do your will for all the citizens of our city with sound judgment and clarity. We ask also for your love, your guidance, and your blessings to this family of Mark Schreiber. May they know that you are with them always and to comfort them in this time of sorrow and grief. We ask you to deliver us home safely and to ensure all who serve and protect us each day return safely to home, to their families, each and every night. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I think the city will probably be sending out additional information, obviously the family, although the new one is coming, probably was not prepared. So as we get additional information, we'll send it out for the councilmen. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and do a roll call.
Allers?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Housleton?
Joe?
Here.
Cam Peter?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Mealy?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Young. President. The other four.
All right. Item three is adoption of the agenda. Motion second, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I don't afford to slate this agenda item, so I'm not aware of any, so that takes us to item five, opportunity for public comment. We did have some individuals signed up. I think you intended to sign up for the public hearing on the property. Was anybody trying to sign up just in the general comment section? Or was everybody commenting on the public hearing on Elm Street? Okay, we've got your names, and we'll get to those briefly, but that was all we had. We had matches with everybody that had signed up for the public hearing, for public comments as well. So we'll get to everybody in a public hearing in just a few minutes, which takes us to the public hearing. Public hearing, item A.
2025-47, an ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving a preliminary and final PUD plan for property addressed as 905 Eastland Drive.
Thank you, Mayor. So this bill would approve modifications to an existing cellular tower located at 905 Eastland Drive. Up on the screen is a location map with the property highlighted. The tower is located essentially between two existing multi-unit retail buildings located on the property. You'll see Eastland Drive over toward the side of the property and a Gers grocery store located right there. The tower, the cellular tower located on the property was originally approved in the year 2000 as a flagpole-style or camouflage-type tower. So this bill would propose to convert the flagpole-style tower to an exterior and antenna-mounted tower. It's up on the screen, on the left-hand side of the screen is existing flagpole rendering, and on the right-hand side is the proposed exterior and antenna-mounted kind of standard cellular tower. The purpose of the request is to upgrade the tower to a 5G service, and the modifications would allow for more carriers to be co-located on the tower. The property is owned to PUD, which is the reason this is being brought before you as a PUD plan, basically to change the existing tower. Planning and zoning commission voted to recommend approval of this PUD plan at their October 9th meeting on a vote of six in favor and zero against. We do have a consultant associated with the project who is online, could add any additional information. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have prior to opening the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Barron at this time? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would you like to acknowledge our guests? If they have any comments, we'll go to the pro side first.
Certainly, Trista, is there anything you wanted to add to what I've already stated?
I think you did a very good job. Thank you for that. Yeah, just real quick, hello, council members. I hope everyone's having a good evening. Yeah, T-Mobile wants to replace antennas, radios, and other equipment on this tower. The newer equipment that they want to replace and install is larger than the older equipment, and we want to install the best technology without being limited to the constraints of the flagpole design. And this would be critical in maintaining coverage with your community as well as first responders in the area. But if anyone has any questions, yes, I'm here. Thank you so much.
Any questions? All right, we will go to the opposition side. Anybody who speak in opposition to the proposal? All right, seeing none, we will close the hearing on pending Bill 2025-047. Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, we'll do a roll call vote on 2025-047.
Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Housleton?
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Will passes.
All right, that takes us to item 6B, permitting a preliminary PUD plan for property located at 1740 East Elm Street.
Bill 2025-48, an ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving a preliminary PUD plan for property addressed at 1740 East Elm Street.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mayor. As a clariprude, this bill would approve a preliminary PUD development plan for apartment complex development. The property is located at 1740 East Elm Street. Up on the screen is a location map of the area with the property highlighted and the zoning on the property. The property is owned to PUD planned unit development category. The property is located about 1,000 feet west of Eastland Drive, driving distance. Also have a site aerial of the property, so zoomed in a little closer, as currently forested site. There are office uses, existing office uses on each side along Elm Street, and also residential neighborhood to the rear. So up on the screen is the preliminary PUD development plan. It calls for development of 12 four-unit, two-story apartment buildings for a total of 48 units. So each unit would be a fourplex with two up and two down, and each unit would be a one-bedroom unit, with each unit's size approximately at 850 square feet. Parking is proposed at a rate of one space per unit on-site. There is some landscaping buffering included within the PUD plan, including a row of trees on each side of the property, bordering properties adjacent on Elm Street, and then also retention of the existing trees at the rear of the site as a natural buffer yard to border, bordering the residential neighborhood. So up on the screen is a visual presented by the consultant at the Plaine Zoning Commission meeting, and it's used to kind of show the scale of the development as compared to the other developments located within the area, so the building size, footprints, and driveways, et cetera. Also have been presented a picture of an existing development in Columbia owned by the same owners, and so they're really modeling this development off of something they've done up at Columbia. Up on the screen is a duplex, and so really they're taking the same floor plans and that same style of building, stacking it into a two-up, two-down, a fourplex style of building. So presented that as an example. So there was a significant amount of public correspondence submitted prior to the planning and zoning commission hearing, and copy that correspondence included in your bill packets. The planning and zoning commission voted to recommend approval of the PUD development plan at their October 9th meeting on a vote of six in favor and zero against. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have prior to opening the public hearing. The owner and developer is here, as well as their engineering consultant, and they could speak to more of the details on the project.
Councilman Tom?
Can you please highlight where the creek, is it where, goes along there? If you don't mind going back to the visual. I drove by there this afternoon, and I'm amazed that the terrain is pretty steep. So I was just wondering how much of the drainage, the draw, whatever you want to call it, how much of that is between this and the residences on the other side?
The engineering consultant could likely respond that into a greater level of detail The creek is somewhat visual, or can be viewed a little to some extent. I believe it's located essentially along there.
All right, that answers my question. Thank you, sir.
All right, seeing no other comments now, we will have opportunities later. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. First presentation coming from the applicants. There's a 10-minute timeframe for the applicants to make their presentation. I think my understanding is there may be two within that 10-minute timeframe, and then we'll go to someone in the opposition. They'll have an opportunity for 10 minutes, and then we'll alternate it, five minutes each, back and forth, anyone else speaking in support. So, the applicant, if you'd like to come forward, just state your name, and welcome.
Thank you. I'm Brian McMillan with Bartlett West 601 in Monroe, here in Jeff City, and, oh, sorry. Can you hear me now? And I'm here tonight with Andrea Chung, who's with the ownership group. And so I'll do, just to try to do a quick presentation, the history of the project, or this property, I think I first worked on it back in the early 2000s. Seth Evans was one of the owners and was trying to sell it. It's a very rough piece of property, very steep, one of the steepest streets in Jeff City that it's adjacent to, so it's not a very attractive piece of property to develop. So he looked at flattening out a big site, and we did all sorts of play-ins to try to make it marketable, and nothing really ever worked. So it's kind of sat there for many decades, essentially. So Ms. Chung and Ms. Chung back there, they came to me and wanted to take a look at development. And so our first thought was to take a 17-unit apartment building and put on it, actually four of them is what we would look to putting on there. And if you're familiar with South 10 Mile Drive, they've got an apartment building kind of behind McDonald's and Texas Roadhouse, and they wanted to take that unit and put a couple, up to four, on this property. But we quickly found out that with the parking required and whatnot, that it was just going to be cost prohibitive to do something like that. So we looked at doing something that fit the terrain better and actually really fit the neighborhood better. So if you go to the density area drawing, you know, when you look at these buildings are essentially the same size as the houses in the neighborhood, and it's spaced out about the same, and so, you know, I didn't see the density being that big of an issue there. So I thought I'd quickly go through the concerns expressed by the opposition that's in the packet tonight, real quick. Higher level of traffic and stress on the roadway. I think you'll see from the PUD application report, staff report, that 25 peak-hour trips is all this will generate, and I'll be highly doubtful it would be that much because a lot of residents don't have vehicles that will live here, and so I think it's going to be a lot lower than that. And, you know, this is a very busy area with all the state offices and stuff, but this is going to contribute very little to that. Devaluation of existing property values, negative effects on the neighborhood character. You know, I went down today, this afternoon, just to take another look. I parked in the state parking lot down there. I could barely see the houses up on the street there, and honestly, I don't think they're going to be able to see these buildings once they're built and the vegetation reestablishes and everything, so I really don't see it being a negative effect on this neighborhood. The type of residence, the new development reserved, I would put that on Andrea when she speaks to address that. Stormwater runoff management, we do have a detention basin going in. It's adjacent to the creek. This will also address stormwater quality, and we are not touching the creek. It's really not a creek, it's more of a ditch. It's very high in the drainage basin, and it actually goes underground just below this, under the big parking lot. So, but most of that ditch essentially is on the neighboring properties, so very little of it touches us, and it actually will be a barrier. The part of the property to the north will remain untouched. They don't plan to do anything, but it's too rough and it's too hard to get to. So, low income or amount of buffering and distance from the proposed development, I think this kind of says it all. We do have some buffer yards shown on the plan. There are really going to be more than that because we just have to clear some area to put in a fill slope, but once that fill slope's in, they're probably going to let it grow up, and it's going to be all even more buffer. Low-income housing, safety risks from future tenants. You know, I would mention the other facility I just talked about on South 10 Mile Drive. It's right next to a new residential neighborhood, and there's no fence between them, there's no 60-foot ravine between them, no ditch, and I've not heard any complaints of anything in that area. And Andrea can probably address some more on that issue. Severe winter weather risk due to site layout and topography. All I can say is this is Jeff City. I grew up on Ponderosa Drive here in Jeff City, one of the steepest streets, and you just deal with it. And I don't think this area is very well taken care of during winter weather, so. Hours of onsite staff operation, Andrea can probably address that, and wildlife and habitat loss due to proposed development. You know, I've been doing this 30 years almost, and this is always one that comes up that I always think it's kind of funny that people that live in a subdivision that was wildlife habitat, but yet it was taken out so their house could be developed in their subdivision, and then they complained about the neighbors possibly taking away that habitat. But on this one, it's actually good because we are leaving a significant area for habitat, but I think it just gets to the point that this really isn't about these issues, it's more about people. The people in the neighborhood are concerned about the people that may live here, and I think Andrea could address that better than I can, so.
If you could just identify yourself, I would refer you to the clock. I'm also just kind of.
It's like a tick down.
Thanks for being here.
Yes, my name is Andrea Chung, and I work for CJCA Development, Inc., but also New Horizons Community Support Services here in town. So I have a statement. Our goal is to provide a safe, affordable, and well-maintained living environment because we believe that everybody deserves a safe home. After five decades of serving in this community, we've seen firsthand how hard it is to find quality one-bedroom units for people. It's just almost impossible. And to ensure the upkeep of the new fourplexes, we have onsite managers, we have full-time maintenance. We leave in one of the units as an office. We understand that change, you know, always brings anxiety and uncertainty, but we're really confident that this will be an asset to Jefferson City, this, I mean, in the future of our hometown. Based on the concerns, I mean, I just had a few points. Like I said, we've operated in Jefferson City for 50 years, serving people who have mental health challenges, and we pride ourselves on doing it well. We have experienced managers and workers, some of whom have more than 25 years' experience with us, not just in their careers but with us. We have trained staff onsite in 24-hour crisis response, which is contingent on residential need, and then we have several locations here in Jefferson City in operation for an extended period of time throughout different parts of the community, and we have proven ourselves to be good neighbors. We like to be quiet neighbors. And, I don't know, there's several, oh, I think Brian mentioned, Brian mentioned the parking. I would say about 20% of our residents, on average, sometimes have a car, so that's a better picture of how many cars might be there. And, I mean, that's why this site is so great, because it's right next to grocery, it's right next to pharmacy, it's right next to, you know, the JCMG urgent care, all of those things which are within walking distance, which is just awesome when you don't have a car, right? And then, so, and then, yeah, and then I think if you guys have any further questions, that would be.
And just to clarify, there was a comment, the South 10 Mile, that is on the west side of I-179. I think there was a comment that all these projects are on the east side, but that project that's on the west side of the city, is that correct?
Yeah, so it's back behind the McDonald's on Missouri Boulevard there, down on that further, yeah. South 10 Mile Drive is weird because it splits, you know, on either side. Yes, it's on the west side.
Questions of the applicants. Councilman Tom?
Good evening. Thank you for being here. I just want to say I appreciate you being in the community. I know this is a tough topic, and I'm interested in hearing, obviously, from all the neighbors, but I do appreciate your service to our community and what you do for our community. I just want to tell you thanks.
Thank you.
Councilman Smith?
Good evening. Thanks for being here. I was just trying to find, I probably missed it, I was trying to find the size, square footage of the retention basin surface area.
That's a brilliant question.
Yeah, I don't know if I know off the top of my head. We haven't done an actual design on it yet because we generally don't do that till the final PUD phase, and once it gets approved here, hopefully, and then we'll actually do the sizing. But I've oversized it based on generally what it would need to be, so most likely what I've shown on the plans now will be smaller when it's all said and done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will go to the first in opposition. We have Ronald and Donna Temme signed up. Are you in opposition to the program?
Yes, sir.
Welcome. If you just identify yourself for the folks at home, and you've got the 10-minute slots, so you don't have to use all of them.
I'm Ron Temme, 1745 Del Cerro.
Welcome.
My wife and I both strongly oppose this project mainly for safety concerns for the neighborhood. CJCA provides subsidized housing for individuals with severe and persistent mental disabilities. That's a concern. These folks will still have their disabilities when they move in, so they still need care. What we heard at the zoning commission public hearing was that they had difficulty staffing, and at their other facility, it only has 15 units. This one, they're proposing 48, and it's so much bigger, that's really a concern whether they can handle something that big. And they said at the zoning meeting that they only anticipated staffing there during the weekdays. No evening staffing, no weekend staffing. That's also a concern, if they would have a mental illness episode, you know, there's nobody there in sight. Just too big a project, I think, you know, at least it should be scaled down in size. 24/7 staffing should be a minimum requirement, and with staffing that's experience in dealing with mentally disabilities. Actually, when you look at this, this probably should be assisted living, not an apartment And being such a large complex, do they have the means to maintain it? You know, it's going to be, it's so much bigger than what they had before on the west side. We don't want this thing to fall into disrepair and then it becomes a blight on the neighborhood. They need to have some kind of enforceable vetting process so they get people in there that are suitable for this complex. Also, got to have an eviction process in place there that, you know, if there is problems, they can get people out without it lingering on for months at a time. Some other concerns is it's right next to Highway 50. There are going to be a lot of noise from the highway there. If you look west of Park Street or in East Elm, there are sound walls that the highway department put in all along East Elm to block the noise. Will that constant noise from the highway, will that be a trigger mechanism for these This, the Veltberg also stated at the zoning public hearing that they may be allowing Section 8 housing in this housing project as well. Well, are you mixing mentally ill people with Section 8? Is that going to cause conflicts? You know, that would be a concern. And also, just by having this complex there, is there's possibility the homeless people are going to follow it into our woods? You know, there's an expansive woods that goes from El Dorado all the way up to Bald Hill, and we certainly don't need to have homeless moving in, setting up camp. It appears that CJCA gets their financing from New Horizons. New Horizons gets funding from Medicaid and Medicare, so it would seem like ADA requirements would be mandatory for some of this facility. I think they mentioned somewhere at zoning meeting that ADA didn't apply, but if they're having federal money pumped into it, it seemed like it would be. We've got a lot of kids and elderly people living in our neighborhood, you know, they need to feel safe in their neighborhood. They don't need to be worried about when they come home at night, if there's going to be somebody around in the shadows. That's a big concern to me. So we asked the city council, don't rush a decision, we'll study our concerns and make a good decision here. This is forever decision you all are going to be making that affects our neighborhood. The city code 352B8 said that you're supposed to protect the integrity and character of our neighborhood, so we'd like for you to take that into consideration. So we urge you to enact whatever restrictions and ordinances that you can come up with just to protect us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in support of the project? All right, next name we have on the list is Lisa Jobe. Are you in opposition? If you could just state your name, welcome.
Thank you. My name's Lisa Jobe, and I live on Bald Hill Road. I've lived there since. I've lived there since January of 1991. I raised my two children there, and I appreciate the difficulty that this community has in not having enough housing, but I feel like this is a residential neighborhood with mostly single-family homes. There are a few duplexes that are being put in, in the neighborhood, but mostly this area is single-family homes. I feel like adding up to 96 individuals with persistent mental health challenges with, I don't, I'm unclear whether they will have nighttime supervision or not, will they just be free to walk up to Gerbs or walk over to McDonald's or whatever in the evenings? And, you know, at what level is this, is their mental illness, like how severe is it? This is my neighborhood where I'm shopping, where I, you know, hanging out with my neighbors and with the neighbor kids, and I just want to, you know, make sure that it's going to be safe for us. I also wondered, you know, that some of the discussion has been that this group has provided housing for people in this community for a long time. Are any of them this big? This is going to be 48 apartments in a non-apartment area of the city. This is a residential area of the city, and we're going to have up to 96 people added to this little area, all of the local services. And I think it would just, I think it would be great if the council would consider all sides of this issue and make an informed decision, and I would feel better if this were scaled back. I think if they said they wanted to bring in 12 apartments, wouldn't be a big deal. But 48 apartments is a lot. That's going to change our neighborhood, and the neighborhood that I've lived in for three decades. So, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next name I have is Don Schmitz. Are you in opposition?
Yes.
If you could just identify yourself for folks at home, welcome.
My penitentiary might have been bad, it's Dan Schmitz.
I'm sorry.
I am opposed to this, and I'm here to present a few of my thoughts. Mr. Timmy and Lisa Joakim took care of most of my list, but I believe you two spoke towards Stormwater, and Mr. McMillan says there's not a size determined yet for the retaining basin, but that was one of my issues I wanted to make sure we're talking about, because the chokehold on that runoff is down on East McCarty BMW Battery. If you recall, not too many years back, BMW Battery basically went underwater, and it's all due to that box cover there at East McCarty. It's my understanding that it's never been increased in size since the 50s. The area on East Elm has been built since then, obviously, so all the state agencies down there, and of course Sonic and the other plaza, create a lot of hard surface, a lot of runoff. So, the owner of BMW Battery asked me to bring that up for him, because he couldn't make it, Winston Clean Thermost, so he had a hard time recovering from that flood down there, and he just, he just feels like another flood just around the corner until they improve that box cover there. The water got there and just dammed up and flooded his store. I also want to reiterate what the other two said about no date, no evening or weekend management onsite to, well, manage the people that are living there. You know, the term persistent mental illness just came up, and that concerns all of us. I own several houses in this area, and I take good care of them, and they are a means for my retirement income, and I want to maintain the value of them. A couple of these people have suggested bringing it down in size. I don't think that's the answer. I think the answer is to bring it somewhere else. Perhaps look at the land on Shaw Hill Woods across from the News Tribune that's for sale. It's very big. That way, if they needed to ever expand, there's plenty of room there, and I'm pretty certain that lot's still for sale. There's also some land behind the Boulder Creek Landscapes store that the owners gave to Jeff City Parks and Rec, and I don't think they need to use it all. They just wanted to make a new bridge into Riverside Park in the future, so maybe they could get some of that land for this proposal. Or in East McCarty, the old Diamond R Equipment location, I believe, is for sale, and that's a lot more square footage, and it's already flattened off, so just look at some alternative places to build if this is going to get built. But we ask that you consider not building it on East Elm. At least it gives good reasons, you know. We grocery shop up there daily, and the best food and the gas station, and we like to keep it safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next name I have is Susan Lewis. Susan, you're in opposition?
I'm not in opposition.
If you could just identify yourself, welcome.
My name is Susan Lewis, and I'm in opposition, obviously, and one of the things, my husband and I are older, we're too old to try to move at this point. We've had our home for 31 years. We like the location, we like our neighbors, and my concern is, they talk about the mentally disturbed or unstable, and I just want to remind some people here, that there was a 70-year-old woman not long ago, it was in the News Tribune for October 30th. She went off her medication and stole a car because she refused to take it. And I feel that this could be a big detriment to our neighborhood if they refuse to take their medication, and then the fact that, you know, I appreciate the fact that low-income housing is important, but my husband and I have worked hard to get what we've got, and we can't afford for the property value to go down. And, like I said, we can't afford to move right now, because obviously, we're at that age, it would be hard to take out a new loan for what they're getting for the new homes. But I would appreciate some more thought on this, and think about some of us citizens. I've lived in Jefferson City my entire life, 78 years, and I like to call it home, but I'm really worried about some of you citizens. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next name I have, Kevin Ploys. You in opposition?
Yep.
Thanks for being here. Just identify yourself.
I'm Kevin Ploys. I got three young children. They like playing in the woods. Ronnie covered the bottom basics, but I don't think that buffer's enough, because we still can hear the highway, so you think it's not that big enough buffer, we can still hear the highway, so. And I still think it's not safe around that corner from, you know, Easton to go towards there and to make that turn, be safety calls, because there's not much room there. I still believe in our wildlife. We like seeing wildlife around, and I'm sorry, there's not much room between the state building and other where they can go to. And you think that stream is big? It gets bigger every year with the rain. They think it's dry, and they thought it was dry last time, but now every time it rains, it gets bigger and bigger. So it is taking away our property value, our property boundary too, so. I just oppose it, because one of my kids, and like, they stated too, in the last meeting, they didn't know how many people were going to be on staff, and they were just thinking it was going to be during the day, not during the weekend and nights, so that concerns me too. So, just hope you look into it, because that hillside's not very suitable for building that many complexes. Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Yep.
Pete Mon, I hope I'm getting the name right.
Martin.
Well, did I get the Pete right?
Pete Martin.
Thanks for being here. If you could just identify yourself.
Pete Martin. I live at Nelson Drive and corner Del Cerro. So, I was made aware of this project by one of my neighbors, Lisa Joakim, and as I started investigating it, I'm thinking, this is just a future disaster. I'm going to use your information back there that you presented. You said unsupervised, mentally challenged, nobody parking. From the plan and looking at it, and they said there's going to be walking distance to the grocery store, McDonald's, and all that up there, it's just a matter of time for one of these individuals to get killed by a car. I live on that road, everybody comes around that corner, it's 30 miles per hour speed limit, but nobody drives 30 minutes. I can tell you, I've came around late at night, and there's been a deer right there in the middle of the road and barely had time to stop. You think about your fire service and law enforcement responding to this, and that incident area, I don't see, that's going to be hard on their trucks, trying to pull in that driveway in that steep angle. Obviously, if this is an area for unstable people, which I do get mental illness, it's a problem in this our society today, but I think this location is just going to be a roadmap for disaster in the future, because there's going to be people trying to go up to McDonald's. If you look at your sidewalks in there now, not very wide, they're already kind of broken up and all that as well, so I don't see where this facility going in there is just going to cause nothing but a death in the future. That's all I have to say about it.
Thanks. Appreciate you being here. Diane Reese? Hopefully, you got your name correct, or close.
No, you got it right.
If you could just identify yourself, I should be in here.
Diane Reese, and I live at 1753 Del Cerro Drive. My neighbors have done a beautiful job explaining their concerns, but I have a few that I want to add that they have not. So, we understand the city's need for housing growth, and this is not a conversation about preventing development. It's a critical discussion about responsible, orderly development that aligns with our city's own planning framework. We believe this location is fundamentally unsuitable, and that approving the PUD would set a damaging precedent for how we manage the transition between single-family and higher-density areas. The issue before you tonight is the fundamental integrity of our zoning code and the stability of our neighborhoods. The land in question is a critical transitional zone bordered by and intended to buffer established low-density, single-family homes. The current proposal represents a massive unprecedented spike in density with the 48 units, and is a scale designed for a major urban core, not a quiet suburban transition zone. The purpose of a planned unit development is to allow for flexibility and innovation that results in a superior development that benefits the community. Instead, this developer is exploiting the flexibility of the PUD process to bypass basic regulations. The fact that this project requires significant variances for fundamental requirements like parking ratios, setbacks, and crucial buffering is the clearest proof that this project fundamentally does not fit the property. Approving the PUD sends a dangerous signal that developers can ignore the constraints of a site and the concerns of neighbors simply by packaging their project as a PUD to gain relief from our established zoning standards. This decision impacts the stability and predictability of our entire city's zoning map. We must also consider the physical constraints of this location. The developer's narrative itself acknowledges the extreme elevation change in steep street grade of the site. Building a high-density structure on such challenging topography creates significant risks that are passed onto adjacent lots. The accelerated water runoff and erosion, the severe grading required to construct this development, combined with the increase in impervious surfaces, the rooftops, parking lots, will increase the velocity and volume of the water runoff, creating an immediate erosion risk to all adjacent properties. The addition of the 48 units will place a substantial new demand on water pressure and sewer capacity in an area that was built for low-density use. High-density projects belong where utility infrastructure has been explicitly designed in size to handle them. The steep terrain requires massive retaining walls and ground disturbance, increasing the risk of soil movement, which directly impacts the long-term stability of the nearby homes and infrastructures. When a site's natural challenges require such extensive and costly engineering just to make it viable, it proves that this is not the right place and type of density. The City of Jefferson has already created a blueprint for growth. They activate Jefferson City 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and this plan emphasizes orderly growth and encourages higher-density and defined corridors that are already supported by the robust public infrastructure. We urge you to direct this kind of development to locations that truly fit the city's vision. These areas were specifically planned to handle multifamily housing and the associated service demands. Projects should be encouraged in areas like the South Side Redevelopment Area, which is strategically located near the Capitol, government offices, Lincoln, and major hospitals. These locations offer existing transit and services that reduce individual vehicle trips, and they noted in their plan that a bus stop would be beneficial at this property that doesn't exist. Placing high-density housing within existing commercial centers is a smart planning move, reducing commuting and maximizing the use of commercial infrastructure. Approving this PUD would be a deviation from the very plan the city created to guide responsible growth. It is effectively spot zoning, creating an island of high density that conflicts with its surroundings when many superior, planned, consistent sites are already available. In summary, this proposal fails because it is an incompatible scale that sets a dangerous precedent. The site's physically unsuitable due to the topography and the utility limitations, and it violates the orderly growth principles laid out in the city's comprehensive plan. We ask the city council to reject this PUD application and uphold the integrity of our zoning code and protect the quality of life for all residential neighborhoods by directing this unit development to a location that truly supports the benefits from high density. And I would like to add, I want to know the incident rates of their existing properties, because that information has not been shared, and I think is a critical piece of information to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If all of you have signed up to speak on pending bill 2025-048, was there anyone else wishing to speak on that bill? All right, same note, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing on 2025-48, and open it up to council if there are any additional questions. Councilwoman Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor. So, actually, I live in the, on the west side, not very far from the development that we've been talking about, but go to McDonald's maybe a little more than I need to admit. But, and I've never had any problems, we live very close, actually, to that. Are there any increased crime in that area, chief, that you know of in the area on the west side?
Not that I'm aware of, but I have not had the opportunity to dig into the numbers.
Okay. And then, the process about the detention basin, can you refresh my memory? I know that the actual final design of the detention basin and everything goes through the city, and they approve, make sure engineering and everything is in order. Can you just refresh my memory on that to make sure that we do have that covered?
Yes, the, it would be part of our site review, engineering site review, plan review for that site, and the design calculations would have to be engineered calculations to meet our code requirement, so, yes, it would be part of it.
It's certainly understandable for people to be concerned, to make sure that we do have enough capacity in that retention basin. Okay. And then, just a question about the developers, when you get it, do you have a second that I could add? Can I ask them a question?
You're currently on your phone.
So, mentally challenged or mentally ill, have a mental illness, you know, that can cover a lot of different things.
Yes.
But we're not talking about criminals here, are we?
No.
Okay. So, these are individuals that can, on some level, live on their own with some help, individuals that do not have a criminal background. Is that true?
So, the way that our services work is that we have, each person has a caseworker that is assigned to them, and they help them with daily living skills, you know, getting them to doctor's appointments, all of those things. And then the residential staff, who would be onsite, would help them, you know, with the basic residential living skills, which is like, you know, cooking and taking care of your air filters, and, you know, like, learning how to be independent in your, in your own apartment. Our, our goal is always to help people be as independent as they possibly can, and so the people who would apply to be in this, it would be probably some of our most independent clients, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because sometimes mental illness, it's easy to equate that with criminals, and the reality is, there's a large range of people, all the way from, you know, being depressed to other things, so I just wanted to make sure that we're not really talking about bringing in criminals into our area, we're really talking about people who can live independent with some help.
Yes. Yeah. It's a, I mean, if you ever hear mental health professionals, they call it wraparound services, so they use services to wrap around a client to help cover, like, some of the, some of them, you know, just need a little extra help to stay independent, and they need that extra check-in, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That was it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lightman, and then Councilwoman Young?
Thank you, Mayor. Is, looking at the aerial shot, is there sidewalks on one side or both sides between the same way this proposed location would be and maybe the stop line is kind of towards the top of the hill?
Is your question directed to Mr. Bremer?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Sorry.
Like, I don't know that question.
I can answer that to an extent.
So there, there are, there is a sidewalk to an extent. It's not a very good sidewalk along both sides of Elm Street, essentially from the stoplight to the, basically, I think, just to the property to the side of this one. So there'd be a gap. But there is, is some, some space on each side of the road to walk, at least to get to, to the stoplight area.
But it's not, is it a sidewalk or just an unimproved area?
It, it is a walking, it is sidewalk. It's not a very good sidewalk, but it is sidewalk. It was installed, as I understand the history, at basically the same time as the, the street was rerouted with intersection improvements. But it's not up to the standards that we would install today.
It's asphalt. It's asphalt up there.
That is correct, it's made on asphalt. Okay.
If this was to be, to approve, my concern would be for the residents that could be there, that 20% of them don't, or 20% of them would only have vehicles roughly. The others would, would walk. My concern there is safety and what the plan is for sidewalk to tell out walking from their residence to any of the commercial businesses at the top of the hill. Just like to know more, a little bit more about what that plan would be or could be. Thank you.
Councilwoman Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is for the developers. It was mentioned about the buffer and the noise trigger. But we also mentioned the level of capacity of the residents that would be moving in. So with that being said, do you see the noise level being a trigger for them, this type of level of crime?
No, I mean, our other development is on South 10 Mile Drive, which is right up from, you know, the other big highway and, or actually the same highway in Jefferson City. And we've had no issues with that, yeah.
In Zuri Boulevard.
Yeah, same in Zuri Boulevard, which is always busy, yeah.
Is that something that you all took into consideration when you're selecting residents that would be moving in?
Yeah, well, I mean, one of the many things that we take into account when, when a resident applies, so there's an application process, is, you know, we talk to their caseworker, we talk to their doctor, we talked, and, and what we have observed previously and how, how they're, and if we believe that they can be successful. Because no one wants to set someone up for failure, right? That can be more harmful than good for people. So we always want to set our, our clients up for success. So, yeah, that is considered, all of that is considered when we do something like this.
So there was part of the vetting process that worked, that worked, the noise triggers. So, okay, so thank you.
Got Councilman Campeter, then Councilwoman Joe.
So I'm sharing the same, it's not for you. All right.
Okay.
We'll keep making you get up and down.
It's your side.
Same concerns that Councilman Lyle has. I grew up, actually, not too far from here. And, yeah, the, so there's sidewalks. If you, is there farther out zoomed or not? So there's side, yeah. I guess, there's two sidewalks that are probably maybe three foot wide, asphalt on both sides, on part. If you look at the street view, you can see it. From the, the building on the corner there up to past Walgreens. But my biggest concern is from there, there is no crosswalk. There's no crosswalk like the blinking hand or, I crossed that road probably way too many times as a kid. And so there's, if everybody's walking, there is no, this area was not made for people to walk to. Even down to Sonic, there's not a, there's not a sidewalk from the development down to Sonic. It ends at the, right past the PUD on the property that crossed it. So really, there's no full sidewalk or crosswalks to get to any of the development that they're wanting to get to. So that's, that's my concern for that area. If it was just where they, you know, residential's that can drive or they're going to stay there the whole time. But if there's going to be that many people walking to their, like Pete said, you're, you're going to have somebody get hit because it's just a green light or a red light. And so they got to figure out when to cross. And who knows how long it's going to stay that color because there's no blink, you know, there's no signs or anything. So that's just my concern. And I don't think there's anything that I've seen coming up with the city that we're trying to make that area accessible by walking. So that's, that's my concern as of right now.
Councilwoman Joe.
Thank you. I also share that concern in that, so I guess, would this be something, knowing that this development is here serving individuals who would need to be walking? Are there ADA grants available that we or anyone else could apply for to improve this or tap grants or anything like that, such a, so if, if we know this is going to be here, what are, what are we doing to anticipate this?
Yes, I can ask you a little bit. Is that, are there grants available for sidewalk improvements? Yes. Has there been a grant applied for this particular area? No. No, not at this time.
Okay, so would that require formal action from this body to explore that?
I would assume that we go, start with the Public Works Department and working with the developers. Not sure what the process would be.
Yeah, I don't think a formal request has to, has to help from the city council typically. That if there are, there are sidewalk improvements and grants that we're looking at, that would, that would typically go to Public Works of Planning and where it would be reviewed for appropriateness and that, if need be, the city council.
Would that be something that we would maybe want to entertain at the, at that level, Councilwoman?
Councilman Lester.
I think that it is, again, it's kind of separate from, from what's on the table, but associated.
Okay, and then the second question I had is for the developer. Sorry.
Aerobics class.
Yes. So you've answered a lot of the questions that I had. Two things. Chief Willey indicated that he was not able to look into the incident rates at the existing properties. But do you have, I know you mentioned that you like to be quiet neighbors, but is there information on incidents that you are aware of?
You mean at the, at the South 10 Mile Drive building or?
Yeah, so the other development.
Yeah, no, not that I am aware of, no.
And then another resident mentioned that perhaps this could be mixed with people who are not part of your program. Is that accurate?
I mean, I don't know the future, so I couldn't say for certain. At this point in time, it is for our, for our clients, but, yeah.
Okay, and then, do you foresee concerns with, with staffing this?
At this point, no. Actually, we've had some, we've had a turnaround in staffing lately and it's been going pretty well, so. I think, also, it's not going to all happen at one time. It's not like, I think we're going to build probably in stages, two or three buildings at a time, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your, your work in the community.
Councilman Allen.
I think this is kind of directed toward Kyle and Mike. That CBDG money that we apply wherever you get has some improvements with the sidewalks and all that. I'm not sure if, if that has been spoken for, if any projects have come out of that for sidewalk improvements and all that. So for Councilman Joe, that might be an area to look at. Maybe Public Works has some time to take that into consideration at their next meeting. That just popped into my head because I remember that from the Hickory Street and all that, that park and all that. But when we redid that area, there was, we get that money there. You could do curb and gutter and sidewalks and all that. So I would think that, that may be a place to, to look. Like I said, Kyle, I don't know if that's been spoken for or not yet or how that could be put on a list, maybe somewhere down the road.
I have to get back with you on it and give it to our CBG administrator, our, our grant person here to see what, what current availability there is. Thank you.
Councilman Mayor.
I was interested in the sidewalk view. And so I've driven down the street here about 12 times. And I see sidewalk the whole way. It's the asphalt sidewalk. I see it all the way down the hill until maybe a few hundred feet before this property. So it goes, I mean, 17, so from like the 16 to 1700 block, you sell, it's sidewalk list. But then you have sidewalk, you get kind of up the hill and around the turn there to start sidewalk. And it's actually, begins on one, at NEA, it begins on one side. And then as you get up for, then there's a side of the road on the other side. Some of the sidewalk looks better than my, in front of my house, I might have to transplant. But then you get up the hill and it gets into a lot better shape. So I don't know what the exact concern is there other than maybe that one, you know, from 16 to 1700 block. And then maybe some maintenance work on that sidewalk. That's just my observation. I just want to make sure it's accurate, I guess.
Councilman Lester.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really have questions. I just want to make a few comments. I, I plan to vote in favor of this housing project. This is very much needed in our community. I want to try to dispel some, some misinformation and false protection about persons struggling with mental illness. Those individuals are much more likely to be victims of crime and violence than perpetuators. When I think of this house, I think of a young friend of my son's. He was quite gentle soul, but he struggled with mental illness and had psychotic episodes and had a lot of trouble accessing services at the time he was alive. And when he was about 20 years old, he took his own life. Before that, my wife and I did try to help him. Help, the committee wants to sort of get some services. He was independent, lived on his own, but lived in a rough part of the city that was Tulsa, Oklahoma. He lived in some pretty rundown apartments. And he was, he was beat up, robbed a number of times. The housing like this was, that we're discussing was available and certainly with the agency that's associated with him, was there helping services. I'm sure that Kim will still be alive. I think this type of housing that we need as a community and I hope colleagues will join us in voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Allen.
One more thing for the developers, I'm sorry. I appreciate, first of all, Councilwoman Neely having driven down there and taken the pictures of the sidewalk. You all have a lot of experience, obviously, with the housing that you already have in place. Is any of that, are you concerned about any of that? Obviously, Public Works were more than happy to work with, with what's available to improve what's there. But it must not have concerned you greatly or you wouldn't have chosen that site. So I just wanted to hear from you about, about this.
So, you know, it didn't concern us greatly. It is a concern, but I will say that, you know, if you wait, if we wait and find the perfect property in the perfect place with the perfect everything, we're never going to find anything. You know, and that happens in any building project, right? So it would be great if the, if the sidewalks were improved. But I, I do think having a safe home is one of the main things. Yeah, and, yeah, it really helps people a lot. And I appreciate Councilman Lester speaking about his own personal experience with someone with health issues, but.
And you have people on-site there working with them during the day, right? So you would know if they were having trouble getting somewhere that they needed to go?
Yes. And their caseworkers can also help them with those tasks, too. So also, if they're picking up groceries or something heavy or something like that, usually they make time with their caseworkers who will have a car and they will take them and work at those things, yeah.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. I figured you probably had already looked through all that and, you know, that you were prepared because of your experience. But I just wanted to make sure.
If I could just mention real quick, from an engineering standpoint on the sidewalks, you know, we are proposing a new sidewalk as a part of this because it's required by code. And I think a comment was made that, that we're trying to do this thing by going against the code. Everything we're doing meets code. We're not, we're not requesting any variances. But the sidewalk is required. We are putting it on our property. I'm actually working on a site plan across the street that, well, once it comes before you, it's a PUD also, it's going to require sidewalks. So we'll be putting new sidewalks in over there. Code doesn't require existing properties to put sidewalks in unless an improvement's done on that property. So then, if you want to try to make the sidewalks better, that it would require, you know, some sort of grant or something, a public project. But the asphalt sidewalks were put in by BoDOT in that area. And at the time, it wasn't acceptable surface for the use, so.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate it.
All right, seeing no other comments. You have pending Bill 2025-048 in front of you for a roll call vote.
Allen?
Aye.
Oseltine? Joe?
Aye.
Campeter?
No.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Callers?
No.
Seven ayes, two noes, no passes.
All right, let's take this to item 7A, appointments.
I need the prison files.
I'll second that.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item 8A, presentation from staff consultants and invited guests. Ms. Perry, welcome. There's information in our package.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first document that you have before you tonight is the sales tax report. These are receipts for the month of November. So we have one month of collections remaining that we would account for in the FY '25 fiscal year. The general sales tax came in slightly above the budget projection. And so we are currently $64,888 above the budget projections for FY '25. As we've talked about previously, the capital improvement sales tax, the park sales tax, and also the public safety tax, again, came in below the projections. And so all three of those are below the anticipated or the budget projections that we have for FY '25. I'd be happy to answer any questions there.
Seeing none.
Next report will be on page, I'm not sure what page we're on here. On page- Next report will be on page, I'm not sure what page we're on here, on page six. This is the revenue model report. So again, this reflects revenues that will be accounted for in the fiscal year 2025. On the sales and use tax, you can see the $64,888 that's over the budget projections. And then as you go down through the remainder of the categories that we have for revenues, you can see that all, one of those categories on contributions and donations is above the budget projection. The next page will actually show you detail broken down by individual accounts. I'd be happy to answer any questions there.
All right, hang on.
Next one is on page nine. Starts on page nine, and that's actually going to be the lodging tax. It's going to end on page 18. So this is actually showing collections. Most recent ones we have were collections for August that were due to the city in September. Total collections on the tourism fund, year date, taking out all the payments that have been made so far, $8,485,000. And the average monthly amount in that 4% lockbox fund is $59,533. Next page will show your occupancy rates. FY '25, I'm sorry, calendar year '25 compared to calendar year '24, those occupancy rates, most recent I have from the CBB at 56.2% for the month of September. And then the next page is the multi-segment report. That multi-segment report shows all of the different occupancy rates for various cities in the state, and that is again for the comparison timeframe of September '25 versus September '24. Last document that I have included in your packet is a presentation for the Workers' Comp Fund. As we've spoken about previously, I was anticipating that we were going to have shortage in the Workers' Comp Fund and that we would need a supplemental appropriation. I am still anticipating that to the tune of about a half a million dollars. I'm hoping to wait until we get a little further along with the fiscal year end '25 so that we could bring all of those before you at the same time. I have not included the self-funded health insurance here. I'm currently working on moving the unutilized funds within the different health insurance categories of the city into the self-funded. So we're hoping that that gives us enough of a boost into the self-funded health insurance fund that we do not need to request a supplemental. But as we've spoken about previously, I'm still getting expenses that relate to the old fiscal year for that. So more to come on that one. We're continuing to monitor it, but I'm hoping that that one is good and that we are only going to need the supplemental on the Workers' Comp Fund. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Thomas?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Perry, for the self-funded insurance, do you have any kind of tea leaves on how that's headed? And I know that there's stuff out there you know nothing about yet, but in your general feeling, where are we sitting?
In doing the cleanup for the unexpended health insurance monies that council would have approved during the FY '25 budget, I'm expecting that right now we probably have between $500,000 and $700,000 to put into that self-funded health insurance account. So I do anticipate it's going to have a positive balance, but it will obviously take several more months until we have final numbers on that.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Lester? Hello. McGriff did an analysis showing us kind of where we were at. At year end, when all, everything's in, can we get another analysis like that from McGriff?
We can get the analysis from McGriff. I think, you know, we as staff did see an analysis when we brought forward the health insurance rates that we proposed to council not too many meetings ago. So those rates were based on what McGriff provided to us, and that would have put us at 100% funding of that plan. For those of you that have been here previously, if you recall the rates that we had in FY '25, we did not fund the self-funded at 100% of what McGriff recommended because the increase or the jump in premiums on staff would have been exorbitant. So we have made some ground up, and once we have final numbers, I'm sure McGriff will provide us with another analysis.
All right. No other questions? Thank you very much. All right. Take us to item 8B. Update on stormwater management. Welcome. If you could just identify yourself.
I am pleased, I am pleased to introduce Katrina Williams, who is our stormwater coordinator and floodplain administrator, to talk with you and educate everyone about our MS4 permit. MS4 permit is really our municipal separate storm sewer system permit with Department of Natural Resources, and she's here to tell you about it and keep, keep us educated so we, we are complying with our state requirements. Katrina?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Feel like I have a hype man. So like Kyle said, I'm going to go through our MS4 permit and then also the stormwater management plan that's a portion of that. So like Kyle said, MS4 stands for municipal separate storm sewer system. This is the definition that EPA gives that system, which is a conveyance of, a conveyance or a system of conveyances. And there's a lot of language there, but it's essentially our stormwater system made up of our ditches, our gutters, our drains, different things like that. Anything that's owned and operated by the city of Jefferson. Our MS4 permit is issued by DNR. We have, we're currently under a five-year permit right now, going from 2021 through 2026. We're considered a small MS4, meaning our population is just over 40,000, it's between 40,000 and 50,000. Part of that permit includes six minimum control measures. Those are basically strategies that we're required to meet to make sure that we are following the regulations of the permit. And then it also includes monitoring and reporting. Within our stormwater management program, which is the permit and the plan, we have a plan that outlines all of our requirements and what we're going to do to meet all those requirements. And so again, those are our MCMs, our minimum control measures, all with the goal to meet an improvement in our water quality by limiting the discharges that are going into our system. So the first one's public education and outreach, public participation, illicit discharge, both pre-construction and post-construction, during construction, how we're regulating runoff from those sites, and then pollution prevention and good housekeeping, meaning how we take care of our own system for our municipal facilities. You should have a copy of your, the stormwater management plan in your packet for you all to look through. It's also on our website. This is something that we review annually. I've only been in this role for about 11 months right now, so this is my first time going through this and reviewing it and updating it as best I can. The next iteration of this plan will be with a new permit next year, and I'll go over that in a minute. But it will look a little different whenever we go through a new permit period. And then that also gives me a chance to go through an annual cycle, which I haven't gone through yet in this role. So I'm just going to go through each one of our minimum control measures and talk about what they include and how we meet those. Again, this is all laid out in that plan. Our first one is public education and outreach. This is essentially who we're reaching out to, who are our target audiences, what are we reaching out to them about? Are we looking at specific pollutants or all pollutants in general? And the when, where, and how of our outreach, how we do that on the web, how we have print outreach, signage. We are working on improving our educational signage around the community right now. I work with Parks and Rec and our Streets Division on improving that. And then social media is something that we've been trying to push a little bit more with our education lately. I think you've been seeing Molly's posts. Really appreciate her helping you out with that. That helps us meet our permit requirement. Public involvement and participation. This minimum control measure is more specific to the, the five-year permit process. So when we go through this process next year to get a new five-year permit, how are we doing our public involvement? Who are we reaching out to? How are we connecting with stakeholders? How do we look at those comments on that process? How do we review our best management practices? BNP stands for best management practices. And then it also, this also includes how we currently take care of our stormwater comments and complaints. And so we have a portal on our website where we receive comments on stormwater and other various items. Anyone can go to that website, that portal, and put in a comment. And then I end up with an email that says that this resident or this person has an issue at this address, and then I can follow up on that. MCM three is illicit discharge detection elimination. This is where we look at our system as a whole, make sure that it's mapped appropriately. There's always opportunities to map that system better, and we are actively working on that. And looking at illicit discharges that come into our system, where are they coming in? How can we investigate that? We do have a requirement for inspecting our outfalls for illicit discharges. We needed to do 60% within a five-year period. We just surpassed that this year with one of our interns over the summer. It's a pretty hot, thankless job to hack your way into all of those storm outfalls, and really appreciate how dedicated our intern was this year. This also covers staff training that we do in regard to how staff oversee illicit discharges, how they detect them, and how they report those back to, to me, the coordinator, and other staff. And then, of course, this also includes training, and then how we look at our, our best management practices and our standard operating procedures. MCM four is our construction site runoff control. This is so, so this is prior to construction and during construction, we require those contractors or consultants or whomever, if you're doing land disturbance of over an acre, you're required to put in a, to have a stormwater pollution prevention plan. And then we also have an inspector on staff within Public Works who goes out and inspects those, those projects to make sure they're consistent with their plan, and then also inspects the best management practices on the sites. So how are they getting rid of their concrete? How are they capturing sediment that might be coming off of the site? How are they putting in controls that might be temporary or that might end up being permanent? And then we also have to have a system of tracking those sites. We do have that system. MCM five is post-construction stormwater management. This looks at new development and redevelopment in terms of, you know, what will we permanently have at that site whenever they're, they're completed. So there was discussion about that detention basin earlier. That is something that we actively look at whenever we're doing site plan review. It might be a detention basin, it might be some type of filtration system, it might be a berm or a swale or riprap or some kind of control to help slow down that water and prevent discharges from going into our stormwater system. This section also talks about how we handle enforcement and how we track those post-construction activities. The last one is pollution prevention and good housekeeping. Again, this is how we look at our operations as a city, how we inspect our own facilities, how we train our staff. We, a lot of our facilities are also required to have SWIPs, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plans. We look at potential mitigation activities within this section of the permit. And then this also includes the process we're going through right now, which is our stormwater management plan, review, and update process. And that's something where I sit down with multiple staff, really, and ask them about their processes and their protocols, and how we can improve on the process. We work with multiple partners. The two main ones is DNR and the Corps of Engineers. We also work with folks at MoDOT and maybe Department of Conservation. Kind of depends on what the project is. There is specific permitting that is required by DNR and required by the Corps of Engineers that we can't do our permitting unless that permitting is already in place. So we will have a new permit next year, so I will probably come back in the late spring, early summer next year to talk about our, our, our next permit process. I have not gone through that before, so I can't really speak too, too much to it. But essentially, we will apply. We'll go through a public comment and review process throughout the summer. By the end of the summer, I believe there will be a, some language that's put forth at this body to check off on, and then our permit would be effective per DNR's approval by October 1st. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Questions? I saw Councilman Thomas, then Councilman Allen.
I just have a possible semantics question. Is it detention pond or retention pond, or are both of those two different things?
We have both. Yeah, it depends on how long you want to hold on to the water.
Okay.
Do you want to, you want to retain it for a long time, or do you want to detain it slowly for a short period of time?
Got it.
Did I say that right? I get them confused sometimes.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Allen, then Councilwoman Joe?
Looking through this, you know, a couple of the things that stand out are the grass clippings and the leaves and all that, which is probably harder than heck to mitigate how that is, the way people mow and the natural thing of leaves falling at that. Is that a huge thing that clogs our stormwater? Do we have a big truck that cleans those out every, is that the one I see around town, everyone has those big suction hose on it?
We do have a street sweeper, and we do have machinery that can go out and clean that. But, you know, we try to do public education to let people know. And it is really hard to, to get that out there as continuous as possible, let people know that you really shouldn't be pushing that into the storm drain, you really shouldn't be blowing that into the storm drain, you really shouldn't be putting it in a storm drain and then burning it, which also happens. So, you know, you really only want stormwater in the drain. But that type of debris will naturally find its way to the drain, just as it would if it was a stream.
I know this time of the year, the, I have an 80-foot pin oak in the front yard that just decided to drop half its leaves in one day.
There is an option. It's scandalous option is to not break your leaves and actually leave them where they lie.
Oh, there. I left them where they lie. I left them where they lie. Councilman Deacon used to say that was best. What do you?
You're out of order.
At some point, you have to do. Councilman Jack underneath the bus.
I'm also on team leave the leaves, just saying. A lot of education on that later if you'd like. But sometimes the leaves fall right into the storm drain, and the street is sloped as such that they go in there. So for, I know of a few within my ward, so is that something where we should encourage the neighbors to just go out and shovel them back into their lawn? Or is there a way for citizens to contact the city to say, hey, we've got a big pileup going on here, and someone can remove it?
It's a combination of both. I mean, it's perfectly appropriate to contact the city and let us know that there's a drain that's clogged. And we have staff at streets that actively go out pretty regularly and clear that out, because that will, that will just naturally occur. If a resident would like to clear their drain so that it doesn't create a ponding on the street, that's fine if they can do so safely. But there's no problem contacting the city and letting us know when something's clogged, because it may be something, if it's not just the leaves, it might be something further down that we might need to actually extract, so.
I'm seeing, not so much to where it's necessarily clogged yet, but it's like preventing the clog before it happens, so.
I would, I would definitely echo what Katrina offered as a, you know, it is a team effort. If you're, if it is safe and you're able to, you know, everybody helping everybody out is, is the way to go. We do have staff of about 28 when we're fully staffed, employees at the, at the Street Division, but there is a lot and a lot of leaves. A lot of, a lot of cases like Councilman Allen was pointing out, where the leaves just, they're on the ground, they're on the ground quick, and it's hard to cover the whole city with, with loaded staff. So, so if you're able, able to, if you can help, we sure invite that, but as long as it's safe and we, there is always the option to contact our, our Street Division, whether it's through our website or directly via phone. whether it's through our website or directly via file and report this year. And that's all.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, takes us to item 9A. Announcement by Mayor Council on Staff, Admin, Councilman Allen.
Give it less. Administration meet, administration meeting will be December 3rd, 4:00 PM.
Across the hall.
Finance, Councilman Leighton.
And Mayor, the Finance Committee will meet this Wednesday at 4 o'clock, across the hall.
Public Safety, Councilman Willinger.
Yes, the next, the next public safety meeting will be this Thursday, November 20th, 3:30 in the police training room, and the public is welcome.
Public Parks, Councilman Lester.
Yes, it'll be Thursday, December 11th, 7:30 in Councilroom.
Takes us to item 10, Consent Agenda. You have three items before you.
To approve.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, takes us to item 11A. Bill's introduced, 2025-049.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles in Traffic, Schedule J, Parking Prohibited by the Addition of Jordan Street between West Main Street and Ellis Street.
Mr. Berman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We, the Transportation and Traffic Commission really kind of loaded this, this agenda up, didn't we, here? But the next several items come out of, come out of that committee. And this one in particular on Jordan Street, this is the block right, right next to, that intersects with West Main. It's a pretty tight roadway. I think it's 22 foot to 23 foot wide. The, this, this bill would take away parking on both sides so vehicles can, can go either way and traverse that road, you know, safer, more efficient. The commission did vote to approve, four to one. And the adjacent property owners are accessed either by the front or back and not along Jordan. So, and we did not receive any, any negative commentary from, from those neighbors. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
All right, seen none. Item B, 2025-050.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, sorry, City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles in Traffic, Schedule J, Parking Prohibited, and Schedule M, Parking Prohibited at certain times by the modification of two spots on Lafayette Street and a south 10-mile drive between Water Hill Road and Highway 179, or Weather Hill Road and 179.
Mr. Berman.
Yes, this Lafayette Street location is right near JC High School where the crosswalk over from the high school to the link is kind of at the top of the hill. Jayette Drive was the private drive, very close to this crosswalk. As you're pulling out of Jayette onto Lafayette and looking right toward the roundabout or up the hill, it gets very difficult to see up the hill and anybody in that crosswalk. There's two, two or three parking spots located in this location. And the proposal is to, during drop-off and pickup times, to restrict parking during that time to create more visibility. If there's any questions, be glad to answer. Again, this was reviewed by, by Transportation and Traffic, and it was unanimously approved on Lafayette Street. Also on this bill is South 10, 10-mile drive. The proposal there on South 10-mile drive is to allow parking on Sundays at the very end of South 10-mile during, kind of help, help parking with the church at the very, at the very end. So it would only allow parking during Sundays, I believe, from 6:00 to 4:00, 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Currently, the roadway width in that location does not support parking on, on both sides full-time. And so this would be an exception to our. Any questions?
All right, seen none, thank you. Item 2025-051.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles in Traffic, Schedule G, Stop Intersections by Addition of a Stop Sign on Saralee at Whitneywood Drive.
Mr. Berman.
Yes, at this location right now, it is an uncontrolled intersection, T-intersection. Again, you know, being Jeff City, there is great issues. There is a hill involved. There's also a very large evergreen tree as you are looking, trying to look up the hill. So being uncontrolled, if a vehicle does not come to complete stop, it's not looking appropriately, it can, it can, it has apparently caused some, some near misses as, as was described by those that live in the area. So add a stop sign at this intersection with, as a control of the intersection and hopefully some safety. Are there any questions?
Councilman Kenpeter.
So there's a question just about these. Is there some way that we can do like stop signs just internally? Or does every, like a stop sign have to come? It just seems like a lot or not much to come to council, just a question.
I think historically they have. We can look at options.
Mr. Neckles.
He has required council approval because it's a law.
The stop sign?
Because it's an ordinance.
Yeah, so we have an exhibit. Sorry, my first time. So we have an exhibit, I think it's exhibit why it's in the code, and we just add stuff to that. Every, in order to be enforceable, although every stop sign has to be passed by the council to be law.
Councilman Allen.
Could we do something where we change that? Could we look at that and not have to have every stop sign? Like, sort of like that we did with the parking? You know, where along Swiss Highway where you don't have to have a sign in order to give a ticket? Could we look at something that's more effective in the future?
I get where you guys are going, but the, when I say it's a law, it's not a, an ordinance that says you have to do that. It's, it's the law. So in order to.
Like state law?
Yes, so in order to punish somebody, you have to pass a law. And you can't have staff creating laws, if that makes any sense. Although the police chief has the ability to create temporary stop signs.
Go, chief, go.
All right, seen no other questions or comments. Item D, 2025-052.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for funding the construction of a snow removal equipment building.
Blue, red, switch.
Mr. Berman, you're back.
Yes, this, this bill affects our airport. Snow removal building, equipment building at our airport would greatly help our emergency response and, and ability to respond to weather conditions at the airport, whether it be icy conditions or unfortunately if a, if a future crash or inadvertent landing, if you will, would, would happen at airport, it would allow better response to that. We do have equipment that, that is presently being stored at our airport, but it is, I would say, not effectively being stored to promote that response. This grant would help start that, start the construction. And what I, what I mean by that is allow for the, for the design to happen and, and continue for the future construction. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Berman, it seems to me we had some previous conversation about this and maybe in some other committee, but you're saying that this design will include room for the RF equipment?
What I'm saying is that this, this grant, what I, what I need to say is this grant would, would pay for the snow removal equipment. And there's opportunity to increase the size for that, that fire equipment.
Excellent, consistent answer. Thank you.
Councilman M.
Kyle, does that grade have a match or is it 100%?
It does have a match. I believe it's 20%, but I can get you, I can double check that.
All right, takes us to item 12A. Bill's pending, 2025-044.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a joint amendment to development agreements with GKF Management LLC, 407 East Capitol Avenue LLC, and 101 Adams Street LLC.
Mr. Berman.
Thank you, Mayor. This agreement, amendment to agreement for the owners of 401 East Capitol and 113 Adams Street and 405 to 407 East Capitol Avenue want to swap those properties. This bill would amend that development agreement with those properties to allow the development of those. Happy to answer any questions.
Seen none. I would note that one of the parties involved has left the room, so we'll go to a roll call vote.
Hosselson, Joe.
Aye.
Kenpeter, Lester.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Bill passes.
All right, takes us to item B, 2025-46.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, establishing election dates in the City of Jefferson, Missouri for the 2026 general municipal election.
Thank you, Mayor. This bill will authorize the candidate filing period and the election date, which will be on April 7th, 2026. The filing period will be 8:00 AM on the 9th of December through 5:00 PM on the 30th of December. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right.
Hit my mic. Sorry.
All right, seen none, nothing on it. Formal takes us to item 14, Revolution.
Take a roll call then.
Oh, we could do that too.
Joe.
Aye.
Kenpeter.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Hosselson. Bill passes.
You've already dealt with 2025-047 and 2025-048 and public hearings. Now we'll get a resolution, 14A, resolution 2025-48.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to the design-build agreement and general conditions between owner and design builder with McCall Gordon.
Councilman Lester.
Yes, I moved this on the table for consideration.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In back in October, way back in October this year, we, the council passed a resolution for the design-build agreement, authorized the design-build agreement with McCall Gordon Construction LLC. As part of the information for that resolution, it was noted that an early work amendment to demo the garage and, and perform work related to that demo, which includes shoring of the alleyway, commercial drive alleyway through there by bones, was, was something that this council would hear pretty quickly. And so that's what, that's what you guys are looking at tonight. This amendment would do, would do that. Again, it would, it would allow for the demo of Madison Street Garage and would also allow for the necessary shoring of that alleyway, which contains multiple utilities from wastewater, from our own wastewater to electric, communications, water, gas, everything else. During this demolition, the contractor would have to maintain at least walking access, protected walking access to bones, which, which obviously their entrance along that alleyway would be affected. The, we have our town with the PPS staff, Neighborhood Services crew, you know, they, they helped procure, along with others here, line item, a state legislative appropriation to the two, about $2 million to help with, with this work. That appropriation really needs to be spent by, I believe it was June 30th of this year and to get all the paperwork done. We're looking at probably really like the May deadline to get this, to get this work done. McCall Gordon has, has bid out the necessary work and they are anxiously awaiting this, that work and really won't be locked in for a given amount of time. And I think that timeframe really, I think the deadline is this week to get an answer, otherwise pricing may change. So with that, be glad to answer any questions. We do, we do have some of the, the team here at the meeting and online. If there's any questions.
Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, can you help me follow the money here? Because we had $2 million or so in for demolition. And this amendment, if I'm correct, adds another 1.5 or 6, a good chunk. Am I, am I right in that for the shoring, et cetera?
So I'm probably not the best one to answer the financing piece of this, but the line of appropriation is for, was for $2 million. Some of that money is previously been spent. I think there's maybe, you know, a million and a half, something to that tune, left in that line item appropriation that can be applied to, to this work that you guys are hearing today. Along with that, Brian, I don't know if you, if you've got any, any other information that you're looking at? If I effectively answered that for you?
I mean, it's, it's about a $2.5 million project. Grant funds are about $2 million and about $500,000 in parking fund. Is that what you're asking?
For some reason, I thought I was seeing 3, 3-plus with the addition of the shoring. And I was just, so the initial funding for this was coming out of the Commission Visitor Bureau funds? Is that plus the state grant?
This is parking fund.
Okay.
And Councilman, you may be looking at the, you know, in that package or in the, in the work that was bid out, there were three amendments that went along with the bid. Those are not being proposed to be accepted.
Right, I understood that, yeah. Thanks, Mr. Berman, appreciate it.
You, you're talking about the 3.3, which is the amount that's been approved for the design construction of the conference center. That's separate.
Okay.
And that is from the conference center fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you, do you want to add to that, Paul? Paul might be able to answer if you have.
Yeah, if you could just identify yourself.
Thank you. Paul Sampson, JC Rep. I think, Councilman Thomas, what you're referring to is the original contract with McCall Gordon was in the amount of about $3.3 million. That was for design work through the design-build agreement. The contract amendment that's before you today is $2.1 million for the garage demolition and shoring. So the 3.3 that was in the original contract is coming out of the conference center fund. The $2.1 million is coming out of the parking fund and then will be reimbursed back into the parking fund through that state appropriation.
Thank you. That's clear.
All right, seen no other questions or comments. You have resolution 2025-48, if I may, for a roll call vote.
Kenpeter.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Neely.
No.
Thomas.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Poselton. Joe.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right, so she turned it on. Resolution 2025-49.
A resolution authorizing the City of Jefferson to apply for funding for the United States Department of Justice Bulletproof Fest Partnership grant.
Councilwoman Joe, if you'd like to get that on the table.
Yes, I'd like to leave this on the table for consideration. Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you have 2025-49 in front of you. Questions? Chief Wilton, any comments?
The only comments I have at this point is that we've applied for this Bulletproof Fest partnership grant many times over the years. It is a... The amount that we need to spend this year is a little over $72,000, and this would provide 50% of that cost to replace some of our very important Bulletproof Fest. So this resolution would allow us to apply for the grant, and if awarded, we would still have to come back to the council for approval of the receipt of that grant, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Seen none. Roll call vote.
Lester.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Poselton. Joe.
Aye.
Campeter.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right, takes us to Resolution 2025-50.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Don Sneeter's Excavating Company Incorporated in the amount of $593,278.02 for the Livingston and Riverview Stormwater 2026 Project 33095.
Councilwoman Lester.
Yes, I can move this on the table.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Berman, one last time.
Yes, at these two separate locations, Livingston and Riverview, we have two creek crossings that have infrastructure that is in need of rehabilitation or replacement, I should say, and this contract would allow that work to happen with Don Sneeter. We did have good participation in this bid, I think six contractors bid, and Sneeter's was the low bidder. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
Seen no questions. You have... I'm sorry. Did you have a question, Councilman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilman Allen.
Rearview on St. Louis Road off of City.
Correct. You good?
Yeah, sort of the five of them all lives. I need to...
All right. You have 20, 25-50 in front of you for roll call vote.
Michael.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Poselton. Joe.
Aye.
Campeter.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right, item 15, none. Item 16, none. Councilwoman Young.
Mr. Mayor, I would like this meeting to be adjourned.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Mayor, can I say something, Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I say something, Mr. Mayor? Please, can I get one minute, please? The meeting is adjourned, I'm sorry.